Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Geneva's City Council Chamber for tonight's city council meeting and the Committee of the Whole, our final city council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting for 2024. I kindly call the meeting to order and proudly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Bowring, here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Maliki?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Earlier this evening, folks, we had a great visit by the Williamsburg Elementary School Weebloos, right?
Right.
Good job. Lots of questions, and you promised me that you would do all of us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, correct? So, gentlemen, as you gather, we invite you to do so here, and we will follow your lead when you begin, okay? I should probably ask Mr. McInerney, right? Do you have somebody from the Weebloos who want to serve as spokesperson, perhaps say a few words to us from the podium?
Anyone want to say a few words at the podium?
No.
Well, I'll speak for the girl.
Oh, please do, and join us with the microphone, so, thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for meeting with us. The kids were really excited to come and check out the City Hall and talk to you, so we really appreciate your time, and I think we're gonna take off. We don't want to stay for and interrupt your meeting, but we really appreciate all the time, so, thank you.
Oh, gosh, thank you very much. Is everyone in fourth grade, or some fifth graders too?
Only one fifth grader.
One sibling, so they're all fourth graders.
Oh, so, fourth grade, and all of them from beautiful Williamsburg Elementary School?
Yes.
And I just received a text from Dr. Dye saying no homework is necessary tonight.
Yes!
Yes.
I would not think that too.
Well, gentlemen, thank you, moms and dads, thank you as well. By all means, feel free to sneak out, otherwise, if you'd like to sit through the meeting, we'll be here until about 10:30. Thank you very much.
Neither do we.
Neither do we. Ladies and gentlemen, our first order of business is under Item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations. Item 3A is a public hearing to approve the 2024 City of Geneva Proposed Property Tax Levy. Is there a motion to open that public hearing? So moved. Marx makes the motion, seconded by Casarag. All in favor of opening the public hearing for the benefit of the public, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. If there's anyone joining us this evening that wishes to ask questions or provide comments regarding this matter, the floor is now yours. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Marx makes the motion, seconded by Casarag. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the 2024 City of Geneva's Proposed Property Tax Levy, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Off to Item 4, Amendments to the Agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the Omnibus Agenda. All items on this agenda marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and all those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Swanson, seconded by Pashke. City Clerk Kelik, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
With 10 votes in the affirmative, zero votes...
Mayor, go ahead.
Aye. With 11 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero alderpersons absent, that item has been approved by this council. We jump to Item Number 8, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk, Ms. Kelik, to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $4,804,789.43.
Mayor, I am moved that we approve and pay the bills as already individual. Items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet and on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on the City Council's webpage and in each member's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Casarag. Any questions regarding the bills? There were some questions earlier this evening that were answered by City Administrator Dawkins. If not, city clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
The bills as presented have been approved by this council with 10 votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero alderpersons absent. We jump to Item 10, Presentations of Ordinances and Regulations. Item 10A is to approve Resolution 2024-138, authorizing execution of an economic development incentive agreement by and between the City of Geneva and owner of 101 through 105 West State Street here in Geneva, Illinois. Is there a motion? Motion by Pashke? Seconded by Maliki. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so, the property at 101 to 105 West State Street, commonly known as the Little Owl, is under construction, under contract with a new investment entity, and plans are underway to create a new dining concept as envisioned by Casey Goldrow from Foxfire and Copper Fox, who leased the property to provide a restaurant focused on providing menu options for patrons with food allergies. The project team is currently working to finalize plans to retrofit the space and advise that they plan to adopt the facade elevations as previously proposed. In keeping with prior determinations for expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act funds set aside for historic preservation and adaptive reuse, we are recommending that the previously approved grant award for $138,800 be reinstated to further the completion of this project. The contract purchaser has also expressed a goal to reinstate the sales tax rebate that was in place for the prior project, however, this request will need to be further analyzed and presented at a later date. If we do have additional questions, we do have Economic Development Director Timoshenko with us this evening, who would be happy to answer those.
From the dais, are there any questions for Director Timoshenko? Seeing none, sensing none, city clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero alderpersons absent, Resolution 2024-138 has been approved by this council. Item 10B, approve Resolution 2024-139, authorizing the execution of a change order, number four, with Ballinger, Locke &amp; Associates Incorporated in the amount of $228,955 for the East State Street Phase II Engineering Contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins will provide a summary.
Okay, so, for your consideration, is change order number four to redesign the placement of the city water main to accommodate AT&amp;T infrastructure that, as of the timing for the agenda publication, they had declined to relocate, forcing a redesign of our water main in order to maintain the construction bidding schedule for March 2025. We are seeking approval of this change order on a contingency basis, only if we have to move forward with this alternative. I am gonna invite Director Babica to the podium because he did have some additional conversations and meetings today, and we'll provide you an update on where we stand.
Director Babica, welcome.
Thank you, sir. In the questions that were asked and answered earlier today, I listed three options with AT&amp;T. One was a complete relocation of their utility to eliminate any chance of a conflict. One was to do a partial relocation, and then the third one was going to be a redesign and relocation of our water main that was creating the conflict with the AT&amp;T duct. Earlier today, and we have not received a definitive, but it appears in all likelihood that AT&amp;T is gonna pursue option number two and do a concurrent relocation of their conflict while we do the installation of our new water main and resolve the conflicts as we come across them. This preserves the project schedule, it preserves the federal funding, it preserves the state funding, and keeps us on the March letting for construction over the next two seasons. Again, nothing is in, no pun intended, in concrete. We're still working to finalize this agreement with AT&amp;T. Staff is still requesting that the redesign be approved on a contingency basis, just in case negotiations fall apart, because the next city council meeting is next year in January, and as it stands right now is that if we do have to pursue the redesign of the water main, we have 16 working days between now and the threshold cutoff with IDOT, which is noon of January 9th, which is what they're giving us, and that is, that's a tight schedule to redesign three quarters of a mile of water main.
Questions for the director from the dais. Alderperson Kilburg?
In here, it says that the additional land acquisition activities increase the contract value to $1.4 million. As a result of this with AT&amp;T, did we have to acquire additional properties, or is essentially... the way it reads is, it seems as though the additional land acquisition activities increased the contract to $1.4 million. I understand that it wasn't the entire increase, but is there a portion of it where we had to go back to property owners and increase what we're paying for additional land that we needed to acquire?
So, that change order was unrelated to this change order. That was a previous change order for the Phase II Engineering relating to Land Act, but that was back in 2023, I believe, sometime.
Correct.
So, if that helps you, Rich.
So, are you referring to the questions that were asked and answered earlier today?
No, he's referring to the agenda summary where we talked about, this is the fourth change order under this contract. I think the Land Act one was the second change order.
It was. Then the third one was due to a reappraisal process for two parcels because the parcels had changed ownership due to a death in the family. That's what change order three was referring to.
So, recent developments then with AT&amp;T as related to the three points that you'd referenced here, that that had really no impact then on any of the property owners? And again, how long has the discussions with AT&amp;T been going on?
They started last Monday.
Okay, last month, so in other words...
No, last Monday, seven days ago.
Oh, last Monday, so then, obviously, additional land was not necessarily, necessarily acquired to accommodate that.
Correct. There is no land acquisition associated with this. All, both utilities will be located within the existing right of way.
Okay, the way it reads, it could be interpreted that additional land was required to accommodate AT&amp;T. That was not the case.
And I apologize for the confusion, perhaps within my executive summary. This information was, no, I wouldn't even say matured, would be an overstatement. Basically, I think I contacted the city administrator, Stephanie, around 2 o'clock in the afternoon with this, this update, this revision, and in order to make the agenda cycle in the Smittles, it was maybe not as polished as the products I normally produce.
No, that's fine. I just, I, I just was curious whether or not we had to renegotiate, or there was an additional payment that some of these property owners received as a result of the AT&amp;T decisions, but not the case. Thank you, that's all I had.
Anyone else on Item 10B? If not, city clerk, I kindly ask you to take the roll on Resolution 2024-139.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-139 has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babica. We jump to Item 11, Public Comment. We invite anyone joining us this evening to join us at the podium, say hello, share with us your thoughts. This is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. We begin with the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Michael Olison.
I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to everybody that volunteered and helped make a successful Christmas walk and house tour happen. A special thank you to the City of Geneva for all the services that they provided to make the weekend happen, and wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a wonderful holiday season, a happy and safe New Year without any fires.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? The floor is open. Good evening.
Hi, Erin Brewer, I'm a resident on Southampton, so, this is my first meeting, so I apologize. So I'm looking at the agenda, Phase 3 of the update discussion, is that going to be addressed today?
That is. That's gonna be discussed in our Committee of the Whole meeting, but if you have thoughts regarding it now, you're more than welcome to share, or you can...
I'll wait, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? New business for the council. Council members, this is your chance to share with anyone, anything that you'd like to I can, I can hear you breathing. For what it's worth, and I think it's worth a lot, tomorrow night, the 17th, is the first home game of the inaugural season of the Geneva Unified Vikings Special Olympics Basketball Team at Geneva High School. If you're able, join these extraordinary athletes as they continue their love of sport, and we are, of course, very proud of them. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Casarag, all in favor of adjourning the city council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We're gonna take just one moment, folks, to switch over to the Committee of the Whole meeting. We will be back at about 9 o'clock. If no one objects, we'll go ahead and convene the Committee of the Whole meeting for tonight, December 16th, 2024. I am chairing the meeting tonight because our friend and colleague, Alderperson Bowring, is feeling under the weather, and she thought it best that she join us remotely. So, item one is to order pizzas on a joke to Alderperson Bowring's home. Let the record show, let the record show that all the alderpersons are present. Item 3A, excuse me, two, appoint, excuse me, approve Committee of the Whole minutes from December 2nd, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion by Swanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. All in favor of approving those minutes from December 2nd, 2024, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And Bowring is an aye as well. Item 3A is a presentation of the facility's community engagement Phase 3 update and discussion. And we have with us tonight our friends, Mr. Ed Sullivan and, of course, Rich Carter. Mr. Sullivan, the floor is...
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good to see you.
Get all this stuff kinda laid out, in case there's a lot of questions, as you expect. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for having me back. It seems I was just here a few weeks ago. But, we are moving forward, as a reminder. This is a four-phase process. We're in Phase 3. We start out wide, asking some broad questions, narrow it down to what we did in Phase 2 on the menu items, and asking some other questions in regard to projects and so forth. From Phase 1 and 2, we built a menu of items that we sent out in what's called an option survey. We also asked those same questions on the option survey that went to the public through a phone survey to the community committee that met December 10th, and we also had an online feedback form. So, we've, to date, through the three, the three phases, we've reached 1,371 members of the community, three online surveys, two scientific phone surveys, and then obviously the community committee. In Phase 3, we reached 140, where we had 148 responses from the community committee and the online survey that people were able to take by going onto the website. And then there was 500 phone survey responses, which is a tremendous amount of data that we received from the phone survey, so that was, that was good to see. I did say that we did, the committee met on December 10th. So I'm gonna kinda, you have our executive summary. I'm gonna go over the highlights of it, and then obviously anticipate questions on, on what that is and how we move forward and so forth. But, first off, with all that has been happening in the city in the last month or two, we, we wanted to retest city favorability, and once again, high favorability. 90% continue to rate the city as favorable, only 10% rate the city as unfavorable. We believe that if, when we see surveys of this nature, if we get 65% or above, that's good, that's good data to work with. Obviously, 80% is spectacular, and so that, that gives us a good hope on all the data that we received so far. So, in the final options, when we talk about whether people and where the pitfalls might be, we didn't see it in whether the, the community through the public survey or the, the committee wanted no additional funding. We did see some additional numbers go up on no additional funding, which tends to happen a little bit, but nothing that we would find as problematic. 69% support one of the options provided, and so, option 1, 2, and 3, option 1 being the lowest, 2 being the medium, 3 being the highest, we certainly saw that the community is, is in favor of some type of funding, they're engaged, and we like to see that as well. When you break into some of the demographics, the conservatives, those that typically would be opposed to tax increases, really only saw 39% chose no additional funding while 60% supported, and so that's, digging into the details of the data is also very good to see. So, one thing that we really have to kind of figure out is where to go, option 1, 2, or 3. There is only a 5% swing between people supporting option 1 to option number 3, and so you saw a lot of movement between the three, and we'll get into that as we go forward, and then as we talk about next steps. So, option 3 is the highest ranked option amongst the general public. You'll hear me talk about favorability versus ranking. When you look at the survey or the questions that we asked, we asked people, do you like this? Somewhat favorable, favorable, not favorable, no opinion, that's the favorability ranking. We also then asked people to take those three options and pick one, so you have to choose one. We're forcing a choice, and that gives us a ranking, and so you'll hear me go back and forth between those statistics and discussions. But, option 3 is the highest ranked option among the general public by a small margin. Clearly, the community committee saw that. You see, and we talk about the community committee as the informed dataset. They get to ask a lot more questions, they get a little bit more information, we can track their movement over time, and that's a good sub-data set that we like. Your phone survey is the, is the intuitive, so you get a little bit of information, you gotta make a choice. What's your intuitive reaction? And then you'll also hear me talk about passionate data. That is the folks that would go online, they could be doing anything else, but they chose to go online, find your survey, fill it out, and get you the data that we want. And so those are the three ways that we're collecting data, and you'll hear me kinda talk back and forth about that. So, option 3, though, however, is ranked, is the lowest ranked amongst the passionate community members, those that filled out the survey, and is net opposition in the phone survey is minus 24%. And so obviously, we're seeing, we're trying to build a bracket here. Your option 3 might be the highest level by which people want to spend money, and then we'll go through the rest. Option 2 ranks second highest amongst the general public, while receiving net positive support in the phone survey of plus 1%. It is also the second favorite option, nearly tied for first amongst those who provided feedback online. It is not favorite option by the community committee, but once again, when we're talking about the community committee, we're talking about the folks that have the most information, can make the determination based off of the most information, so we would certainly see that ranked lower. Option number one is a top choice for those providing feedback online, and is the option with the highest net favorability in the phone survey, plus 9%, but it is the lowest ranked option amongst the general public by a slight margin, and is the least supported option amongst the community members. Once again, we know what the community members are, are looking at. So we see option 1 is more of a, an enthusiasm gap, if you will. You have a community that obviously likes this institution, and they have a good understanding of what they want in regard to the projects that would be in option 1, 2, and 3. Obviously, they see as option 1 is probably not the one they want to support because they see other projects that they want. So, we don't see a clear consensus emerging from Phase 3, which is not necessarily uncommon. You're putting a lot more data that they're trying to look into, and we want to give them more information. The community likes the benefits received in option 3, but the funding level is at the top of their stratosphere, so that's at the high end of where you potentially could, could go. While it would be difficult, the city could move forward with this option immediately in the next election, and it would have a decent chance of succeeding, though it would elicit strong passionate opposition, and so that's where you want to be a little bit careful, should you choose to go that. Or, it would be our recommendation that the city, if you wanted to go to option 3, we're talking about, that you would want to wait, educate the public on facility needs and challenges throughout 2025, the next election after April would be a March primary or a November election in 2026. Option 2 achieves less of the city's and the community's wishes, so it doesn't receive the same level of support or passion, but it does have a lower cost. And so that's what we saw in the data, is people are not looking at the high-end costs of option 3, they're more favorable to option 2. So, obviously, with a lower cost, it receives lower opposition. Should the city move, wish to move forward with the safest option in the upcoming election in April, I think option 2 would be the strong chance of succeeding at the ballot box. And as I said, option 1 doesn't really excite a lot of people, there's not a lot of passion with it. It's the least favorable option, but it also receives, it, it receives the lowest opposition. We don't recommend pursuing this option, though should the city choose to do so, and once again, you guys are gonna have to make that decision, you certainly could go in April, and it would have a high chance of success. So, based on the gathered collection throughout this entire engagement process, our recommendation is to create a hybrid option, somewhere between option 2 and 3. So we know that the public likes what is going on with fire station number 2. They, fire station 2 had the most work done in option 3, but we're at that little point where they don't necessarily like the tax impact. And so we know that option 2 did not have as much of the fire station in it, had more in the city hall, so our, our recommendation would be what we would call a hybrid model. And we, we see this a lot, where, you know, you're kinda in between options, and where should you go? And so, taking option 2 cost, adding some additional funding for more improvements to, to the fire station number 2 would give us this hybrid model, somewhere between the cost of option 2 and the high-end cost of option 3. And obviously, this is based off of, of tax impact, and the fact that they, they want that. But, to close, whatever the city decides, the data in the committee shows they're ready to make a decision in the April election. Either the hybrid model, option 2, and option 1 all show enough support to have the odds of success. Once again, if you want to move through with option 3, you certainly have data that shows that they would support it, but our recommendation would not go in April, and to go in either March or November of '26, and doing a full communications discussion with the community so they understand what's exactly on it and what all the benefits are. It's, you're not selling the buildings, you're sending the benefits to the community and what those would be. And obviously, we talked about home rule. The community supports home rule. If this is still something that the council would like to discuss, we would, and you would have to make a decision whether to put that on the ballot for April by January 13th, I believe. You would want to actually engage your community some more, and put some emails out, talk a little bit more about that, and see what responses you elicit. If you're eliciting great responses, well then, potentially you would want to move forward. If there's some tepid responses, then we definitely, any tepid responses, I would say, would be our recommendation to pull back on home rule and potentially put that as a '26 referendum, should you want to do that. April election is, is a low voter turnout election. You can get one group of people that can easily overwhelm an election. Typically, when we see home rule, historically throughout the Illinois, it's been realtors, realtor associations that have opposed, and so you wouldn't want to have one group kinda wouldn't want to have one group kind of overwhelm your ballot because of 15 to 20% turnout that you might see versus what you just had. And I don't know what your turnout was, but probably 70 to 75%. So, that's my presentation. I am more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions in the day, as we'll begin with Alderperson Marks and Mayor.
Thank you. It was very good to see this ahead of time. Do you, do you really, I guess it's your opinion from the data you've seen. I, I believe it's most people on the council would like to see option three really be the one. Do you think if we really did public education and took some time, that we would get that by waiting? Or is it just get the low?
Yeah, so remember all these-
Because finding that hybrid is gonna be hard, you know?
Sure. All these surveys are a moment in time. So what is your opinion today, or a week ago, when we asked you? What can change that? And so, we really like looking at the data from the community committee, because we can see their movement in time when they get more information. Now, if you chose to go with option three, we're not saying it's, it's, if I thought you had no chance of success, I would tell you, you have no chance of success.
Okay.
That's literally our job, is to help guide you with the data that your community gives us, with some interpretation of that data, obviously. So yes, if you chose option three, we would suggest a robust education, and we can give you a sample community program. And it just depends on your budget and how you want to go out and reach. At that point, it would almost require this entire city council to be part of that, as ambassadors going out to different segments of the community, whether it be realtors, or your religious groups, your business groups. Obviously, you had a business, you know, the chairman of the business group was here.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, that's my train of thought there. But senior communities. So that's something that obviously we can assist you. We've, we've done this. But, a higher probability of success would be waiting and doing that during the year, as opposed over to the next three, four months.
And again, I realize that's a snap right now. I mean, and you might not have known this, but the, the county is also probably going to be going for a sales tax increase in this election. Do you think that would have anything to do with, you know, all of a sudden you see a real estate tax increase possibly far, you know, I just wondered if that came into it at all?
So it's, it's interesting, because my brain would work similar to what you're thinking, that maybe, you know, two tax increase, maybe-
That's why I'm asking.
Maybe we vote for one and we don't for, for another. We just ran some referendums in this last election where one of our clients, well, two of our clients were on this, were in the same, you, you had residents that could vote for one or two, and then the county had one, so there was three, and all of them passed.
Okay.
So, it's hard to say. Now, we also believe that the November election was going to be extraordinarily favorable, and it proved to be extraordinarily favorable for referendums. And so it's really the referendum election. And I think I sent over kind of our one pager on what is the appropriate election to go to. The good thing is, you are doing things that will do infrastructure support to maintain buildings. Obviously, people believe that the historical nature of what's going on with some of this. And so those are some of the types of things that you would be doing that is favorable when the next election, in an April election, where you're gonna have low voter turnout. But seniors want, you know, have a historical idea of what they like. They want you to keep what you have and build upon it. Same with conservatives. And so those are the different sections where what you're trying to do aligns with what they kind of like to see, historically, that we've seen in elections.
Do you think the, the real reason for option three isn't because of what we're doing, just the price tag?
Price tag.
It is the price tag?
Yes, we believe it's the price tag. And so, I believe, what we're, it was 65 on the high, what was the median?
Could you read off the actual options?
Yes, I, I actually have those right here. All right. So, option one would provide a 45,000 square foot police station in the city-owned site east of Public Works Street, along with regular maintenance of city facilities, no renovations, just ongoing maintenance. That option was $47.2 million with 125 per year price tag for your average homeowner. Option two, once again-
What is the average homeowner metric?
$350.
$350.
Yeah, $350,000. So option two provided that same 45,000 square foot police station, renovation of the current city hall with a small addition, and demolition of the non-historic section of the old library. Renovation of the current city hall will include a 10,000 square foot, square foot addition and partial demolition of the vacant library building to retain only the original section as a standalone building and maintain historic exteriors. This option would also include minor renovation of the West Side Fire Station number two. This option was 66.1 million, and it was 175 per year for the average homeowner.
66.1 million?
Correct.
And what was the other?
175. Oh, what was the option one?
No, what was this, 175?
175, correct. Option three, as it went to all the groups, same 45,000 square foot police station. The renovation and expansion of current hall would include a 15,000 square foot addition to connect the city hall with the old library and create a civic center, including partial demolition of the vacant library, only keeping the historical features. This option would also modernize the West Side Fire Station number two, providing significant improvements. Also work on infrastructure, mechanical safety, and security. This option was $85 million, and approximate impact was 225 per year. So when we talk about hybrid, we would talk about starting at year 66, so option number two.
The 66.1 million, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the wrong one. 66.1 million, and go somewhere in between there. So what would, what we found over the course of the three, the three phases, is that there's a lot of interest in the, in fire station number two. And so, adding that as something, once again, we're leading with our strengths. What do people want to see? What does your community want? And then they really are excited about option number, what, it was in option number three, but not the price tag. So if you can pull out some of this, add the fire station to the 66.1, does that bring it to 72? It's obviously not at the 85. And so that's the hybrid model that we're talking about. Ideally, if you wanted to back into a number and have $198 as a tax impact versus 200 or above, it's just kind of selling things that sound a little bit better, I guess is the best way to put it. But, it's the threshold. It's the threshold of 200 versus 200. And so, if you went in and did something to that effect, where you, you got into the 72 to 75 million dollar range, I think that's more palatable. And, but more importantly, you're adding back into something that the public has already told you that they like, and that's this fire station number two. And so, you're not maybe doing all the things that you might want to do in option three, but you're doing something that we think would give you a much better chance of, of passing something in April. But once again, you can certainly wait and do more community engagement over the next year, and we'd be more than happy to help with you, give you a sample plan.
How would you, for the community involvement group, how would you rate when they started out looking at stuff? I mean, did it really move up higher and higher each time as we went through what we needed and the explanation was behind it? I mean, originally, I don't think that group had a total idea either, what they were looking at.
No, no, they, they started fresh, just like anybody else did. But we know that they have always consistently been at the higher level.
Right.
Because they've heard what it means, what it's gonna take to do the things, what the benefits are. And that's really what we're selling, is what are the benefits to the community? And so that's where we get to see, all right, over time, if you went to your community and showed them the same thing, and really did a huge engagement, you had any of your ambassadors, you know, that is something that potentially you could do. So the question, you know, and that's, once again, your council will have to have that discussion, is it better to go now and get 80% of what you want versus 100% and waiting till, you know, March or the following November? Obviously, time is money, and if you wait another year, it's another 4%, 5% increase in costs, and, you know.
And I know this is, this is making you look into your crystal ball, because I know you didn't go down this route. But just to get a feel, because you've seen all the, the data underneath, is, do you think if we went without the hybrid two, that maybe a year or two from now, we could get the rest of what we wanted in option three? Or would that, do you think we would build that community relation well enough then?
Sure.
Or do you think when we got option two hybrid, everybody say, you got enough, let's be done?
That is potentially what happens, quite frankly. You know, you went, and then you want to go again, so why didn't you go for it all the first time? Would be my, my intuitive reaction to that.
Okay. All right. So that's your crystal ball, I think.
That's my crystal ball. My intuitive reaction would be, why didn't you go and the, for the whole ball of wax at the beginning? And like I said, I'm not saying that it would be, you could not go in, in April with option three. I'm just saying it would be much-
Be a lot of work.
Lot more work, for sure.
Thank you.
And, and I think, could there be success? Sure. I would tell you that the other, as our analysis says, your hybrid, option two, and option one, we think are, are very likely to be successful.
But that swing is so low, you know, when you look at it. And that's, that's what causes me-
So the data leads us to a hybrid model, because we know that they're enthusiastic about parts in option three, the benefits of having the fire station and all the rest, but they're just wary of the costs.
Okay.
And, so bringing those costs down, obviously, you're giving up some things in, in option three. But, you know, the enthusiasm for some of the changes in the city hall weren't necessarily something that they, they were greatly enthusiastic about. So if you're pulling things that aren't greatly enthusiastic about, you're not harming the overall project.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I appreciate your input.
And adding in things that they are enthusiastic about.
I, I do, I, I wonder how, how fire station got, would it got, because, you know, it is on the west side. But, but I thank you. I appreciate your insight into all of this.
Sure, no problem.
Mayor, I'm finished.
Alderperson Mayor, Alderperson Kilburg, Alderperson Bruno.
First of all, I wanted to ask you to go over what the committee, what their results were again, because in all the numbers that you were throwing around, I, I didn't really get where they, where they weighed in.
So, in your packet, there's this slide that has the ranking of potential options for the community committee and public engagement. So, the community committee met on December 10th. They went through a presentation on the options, and they chose option three as their highest ranked, option two, option one, and then no, no additional funding. You can see on that also the public engagement. So those are the folks that are the passionate responses, or passionate dataset that we're talking about. Those that went online, took time out of their day to go and say, all right, I really want to see this, and give them my response. We call that the passionate data. That passion could be good, that passion could be bad, quite frankly. And I don't mean bad, I mean negative towards the overall projects. And obviously, with that, they said no additional funding. But, you can see, option one, two, and three were very closely aligned. And, I believe we had 69% said they would have some type of funding. And so, obviously, 69% say, yes, we believe that we should move forward with something. They're more likely, because once again, they didn't get to see all, or hear all the reasoning of things that your community committee, so they're gonna have a different dataset. That's why we have three datasets to, you know, explain it and kind of see where things could go over time.
No, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. I guess the next question I have is, at one point, there was options within the police station and options within the different projects about sustainability and different, different aspects before we arrived at one number for each project.
Correct.
How did we get to where, I, I thought the first survey, it went all the way up to over $100 million of requests.
Correct, correct.
And now we're down to requesting a maximum of 85 million, which I, I don't have any difference of opinion about this, but I do want to understand how we transitioned to a very definitive project scope, it seems.
The reason I started out by saying it's a four-phase process, that starts wide and funnels down, the first phase two, we went out to the community multiple ways with a larger scale of things to talk about. So we want to see, what are your menu of items? And that's what you're talking about, is the various different components. And we were able to rank those and say, okay, here are the, the 10 items, or buckets of things that we had, and we ranked them. And so we then built our program off of, what's the most liked items, or the highest ranked, and how do we build them into, now a plan, if you will, based on what they told us their, their comfort level is within a funding level. And so, if they said funding level is X, we want to bracket that to see, okay, maybe we can get them a little bit more, maybe they just say, no, we want less. And what we've concluded is, they want to be somewhere in between, two and three. And so, probably a little bit higher than where they were in, in phase two, which is good, because that means they're, they're listening, they're, they're researching, and they're, we've been able to push the funding level up a little bit. And it's not we, as a group, it's the community that's listening to this and saying, okay, well, here's our opinion. And so that's how we're getting these data cells. And so, obviously, phase two, you had all that information that you're talking about. We narrowed it down to specific plans.
So do we know what, do we know what those specific plans include now for the 45 million, for the 66.1 million?
Yeah, yes. And, and, well, I mean, we know what we asked. And so in the survey, and in the community committee, and in the online portal, we asked the exact same questions. And so, you know, option one-
The specifics aren't necessarily worked out by you. You just picked a number and-
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. We're, we're giving, we're giving you highlighted items that would be included, but not the specifics of, what is this police station gonna look like, and how much sustainability are, are gonna be in there. But we did say, this would provide most benefits that community's requesting. And this is, remember, this is the menu item of things in phase two, including infrastructure, mechanical, safety, and security, historic preservation, accessibility, technology. So we do talk about that, because that's what they told us in order they wanted from a menu of items for the benefits of the different things that would be built.
May I have just one? I think one of the questions you're asking is, we had, when we started in phase one, I believe, we had a should do, a must to do, nice to do.
Right.
These numbers are all just at the basic.
They're at the need to do.
They're at the need to do. They're not including, for example, a firing range. So these are all at the need to do level.
That is what I wanted to know.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
That was her question.
I don't always get it right, but I try.
Okay, so that answers that question. I think I am, I am good for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Alderperson Kilburg, then Alderperson Bruno.
I appreciate the research that you've done for us. I think it's very helpful. I guess my question is, do you feel it's critical that we give some type of a visionary facilities approach to the community? Because, obviously, I think at the end of the day, or it would appear that we're, we're, we're probably not prepared to maybe make the commitment to three at this point in time. But what do we tell the community? Obviously, these needs exist, but don't we get into somewhat of a, a needs and wants assessment of some of these, these facilities? In that, I think as we look at it, you know, to say, well, we're gonna take care of all our facility needs with one referendum, I think is a giant step. I think to, to, to show the community how we're going to look at a five or a 10-year plan to address facility needs, I think that that's, that's something I think as a citizen, as a taxpayer, I think that, I think people appreciate and I think can embrace. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think you're absolutely right. You, you should always be projecting out in time what you would want to do, should you have the money. In this case, you would like to go to referendum, we're telling you through our analysis of the data given to us by the community, that here's kind of their sweet spot, you know, and here's where we think it should be. You obviously have to make that decision. But you have the data, and the data can be useful going out into time, whether the referendum passes for $70 million and part of what you want to do. You still have the data on what they feel about all these projects. And so as money comes available, that stays with you over time. Would their opinions change? Certainly, potentially. But what you would be doing next, obviously, you would make a decision, go to referendum, assuming you do by the 13th and something's on the ballot. At that point, you're now going into community education. Legally, the, the village and all of you can be part of that. There's limitations, obviously. There's probably the most limitations on your village administrator versus- versus city council people, and we certainly can help you with that. But you're going to go through an education program. We can hand you a sample education program that we would run if brought on board to do that. Where you're going to, once again, invite people to the community. You'll have more detailed plan in what's going to be in it, selling the benefits of that. Obviously, you're leading, as you go out there, with what you've already learned. What are the things that your community values the most? Talk about those the most. You might have some things that you still have to do, but they don't necessarily gave us data that they benefit, or they value it. You just don't lead with that, you don't talk about that. You certainly can do that, because you know what has to happen. But you'll be running a robust education program that you can do legally, should do, where we'll bring everyone together and say, okay, who wants to go talk to senior citizens community? Who is going to be the ambassador to various groups? Are you going to send out mail to kind of explain this? What are you going to do to have tours of facilities? We always talk about, alright, well, let's take a look at the police station. Maybe it'll rain three weeks for the election, and you can say, hey, look at our, look at our problem that we have that we're trying to solve. This is what we're talking about. And so that's the education program that you would want to run, and we certainly could be helpful there.
Getting back to my question, though, needs and wants. I think if we're looking at option two, then I think what we've done is we've identified needs.
Correct.
And that to say, well, these other items I think are nice, but they're really more wants at this point in time. And I think that you have to address that, because the want doesn't go away. And I think to outline or provide some type of a strategy that this is, this is not going to go away. That really these needs or these wants still exist. And by the time we potentially get to another referendum, there'll be needs by then. And I guess having a strategy or an approach to explain that to the community when, if in fact we go with option one or two, I think that that's imperative. In that to say, well, we've decided these aren't a priority anymore, these things aren't as critical, and that we're going to get to them maybe sometime later. I don't think that's a good answer. I think that what you tell them is that there is a strategy and that there is a visionary approach as to addressing comprehensively the needs of the city. And that's all I'm saying.
And you're 100% correct, and that's the messaging that would take place.
Okay.
One of the things that we pride ourselves, like any candidate, you keep them on message. Why are you here? What are you trying to accomplish? How are we going to get there? What you just said is exact messaging that would go out to the public to say, hey, we listened. We went through this process to learn what your beliefs are. You told us you're not here, we'd love to be here, and you can even say that, we'd love to be here. But you told us you wanted to be here. So that's the first part of the messaging that we would start off with, exactly what you're talking about. Because you have to explain how you got to where you are and why you put it on a ballot.
Got you.
Okay.
And then finally, as we look at the financial piece of this, it would appear to me that sooner would be better than later. And as we look at bonding, and as we look at the potential risks as it relates to inflation, maybe, in 25 and 26, and some of the concerns by people that are a much higher pay grade than I am, I think that there's advantages that would be there to go as early as possible. And especially if we can keep the number at a manageable level. Would you concur?
There's no doubt. We are not seeing the same problems you had during COVID, where inflationary numbers were stratosphere, I mean, through the stratosphere. But all the construction managers that we've worked with, we ran six referendums this last election, and they always talked about 4% to 5% growth rate in building costs. And so if you wait to.
Two years.
A year and a half even, you're talking 6% to 8%. So, yeah, that's a, that's a big number. What do you cut from your program to go out in time? And that's why you would probably still then go to the higher level. But you'd still have to cut something.
If you look at the inflationary factors, and if you look at the potential increases that relates to the bonding of the project, those would be all drivers, probably, that it'd be much more favorable to go in April than to delay and.
For sure. There's uncertainty in inflation and bonding. Obviously, you're going to have bond council that can advise you on that.
That's all I had, thank you.
Sure.
Alderperson Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to extract a piece of what Alderperson Kilburg touched on. But to bring this back to the question of home rule, you would, correct me if I say anything wrong. It said home rule is probably not a good idea to go with this next election cycle, but spend more time educating the public about what it can offer.
That's part of our answer. The other part was if it really was of the council's belief that this is something they really wanted to look into, you would want to go pretty quickly to the public with some guidance, some questions, more information to see what the responses are. And obviously, we're only talking less than a month, over a holiday. So it's a little difficult, but you could get out some information, see what those responses are. If they're very positive, that's one thing. If they're just a little bit tepid, it would be, you know, it's one where home rule elicits a lot of passion. And it certainly will with some certain groups. And the election you're talking about, April, is such a low voter turnout that our caution is that one group of individuals could overwhelm the electorate.
Yeah, and that is a convincing argument, and I'm fine with that. I think that's probably exactly the case. But home rule gives us authority to address issues that the public really wants. And it can let us spread the pain about regarding, regarding our infrastructure updates we're talking about in these referendums. Would, would running a, let's say, option one as a referendum upfront taint a possible home rule referendum in a future election, do you think? I'm basically, I'm kind of building.
You're not talking same election, you're talking future election.
Future election.
So if you want to run.
What I'm really trying to game out is the, part of the, easing the pain is do these small tranches over time instead of one giant referendum in one election. But if we went with something small today, it'd be like having home rule and we do an initial referendum, and then we can do these things over time. But, so.
So the question, well, still remains.
No, I understand where you're asking or what you're asking. And it's not something that I can look at this data and give you an answer concretely. I can give you a hypothesis in that, you know, you want to go and win, and you want to do something. So you're going to go with level one. You still are going to have to go and explain to people what you mean by it gives you more opportunity to do other projects over time. And what does that mean? I know what it means, I know what home rule means. You know, different taxation methods, different ways to include different people to share the wealth. And so your selling point at that point would be, we went for a lower taxation, property tax increase on the front end to get here, where then we can spread it out and not have as many. I mean, that's your selling point.
One of them.
One of them, for sure. But that same education effort would have to take place for home rule, because the public, we saw support, but that's support without any opposition. And so it's a point in time. What happens when opposition comes in? You want to be on the front end where they already understand it, so when the opposition comes in, it's refuted. And so that's where that education program really is a must for any type of home rule initiative that you want to take place.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alderperson Maliki, floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a few, just probably fairly quick questions. And maybe towards you, maybe towards Stephanie, with option two and hybrid or whatever it is with city hall, has there been any discussion about what the actual vision of the civic center is, part of that puzzle? Rather than just being a civic center?
Yeah, so one of the things that will take place is, we will start building out that final one for, you know, what you guys, depending on your discussions, I'm assuming that we've already really started talking about that. So we can get into, once you have a final option, you can get more detail. It depends what you want to put on a ballot question. We would help your bond council with that. There's certain phrases that you can use to elicit a better response from a ballot question. Most of it is legalese that the state has mandated. But because we've done so many of these, we know poll-tested discussions on, you know, how to lead with your strengths, if you will.
Sure, I just didn't know if, you know, a little more definition on that would help sway things one way or another at the end of the road.
Phase four, that we're talking about, remember four phases? We're at phase three, phase four is final plan. And we will help the administration build that final plan and put it in the best light according to the data.
Gotcha. Earlier on, you were talking about how with polling and everything, how Geneva is a very highly favorable city from the responses and all that. Have you worked on any projects in the past where cities were ranked highly favorable by the residents that went through a similar process and things didn't go as according to plan?
Village of Lake Zurich, seven years ago. The issue there, though, is they didn't really run a campaign. So they took our data.
Okay.
And they said, hey, you could do this, and then they didn't really run a campaign. They didn't run a political campaign or an education campaign. And so it was just put it on the ballot. They didn't do poorly, but they didn't win.
But they didn't get, yeah?
Right. And so we would, we would obviously think, you know, your community committee that we're talking about, that is one where potentially we would phase into a political committee, because you guys cannot run any political organization. You could be part of it, but we also teach the board or the city council the do's and don'ts. We actually have a one-pageer do's and don'ts.
Sure.
But your education end of this is going to be imperative.
Gotcha. It's like the transparency communication.
Yeah, and I can send you a sample plan that we have that, okay, if you had all the resources in the world, here's a five-page plan that we would implement and, you know, help you run. Or you run yourself, either or.
And then throughout the community, the community committee was always asked the same questions as like the public committee, like not only like what they like better, but also how much they're willing to pay, correct?
Correct.
Throughout the whole process.
Yeah, all three data points that we're talking about, we're asked the exact same thing.
Yeah, okay, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone who wishes to ask questions or speak? We do have a request for Alderperson Bowring, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm trying different headphones. My hope is this will work a bit better. So I have three questions. So the first one is, I just, I think this is my understanding, but basically, people see the value in all of the proposed updates or total redos to the facilities that have been discussed, but they're bulking at the cost. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that range is somewhere between two and three, option two and three.
Sorry, you're saying the support for the individual projects is somewhere between two and three? You see drop off between two and three, not just, not just based on the cost, but based on the specific improvements proposed?
We see that the tax impact at the high end, option three, is at the outermost limit of what your community believes is appropriate. And so our thought would be, you could probably do it, but it would be a difficult task. Informing the, your residents over time will help get them to where they want to be to go in a future election. If your choices to go in April are suggested, would be to do a hybrid model or anything below that, would be perfectly fine.
Okay, but I mean, there's drawbacks to doing something lower, because as you said, then if you don't actually get everything done, which we wouldn't be frankly, then you're in a position and needing to find more funding down the line.
Potentially, yes.
To meet those needs. And then there's a conversation about, well, why didn't you ask for it? And now also more time has gone by, so everything costs more. So I guess, and I do understand that this is anecdotal to some extent, but since there was significantly more support for option three amongst the committee, which is getting the most detailed, I think, and like thorough education about it, I was wondering if you could give us a bit more insight into like why they supported that so much more than the other groups? Is it because likely they understand the deficits in our current facilities and are more willing to stomach the cost or something else?
I would say all the above that you're talking about. They have more knowledge of what's going on, they are able to sit and ask more questions. And so they got the answers that made them feel more comfortable that, yes, we probably need this, it's going to cost money, but I'm willing to support that. And so when I say you could go with option three with a heavy level of engagement, that's where we're finding that out. Because we already know that there's a subset of your population that understands the projects, because they learned about it. And so if you can mimic that same learning function to the overall public in the next three months, the probability is higher that it will pass. I'm not going to sit here and say, man, this is in the bag, but we think you could go. But it would take this entire city council going out and hitting groups and really working the streets to get people to understand why we want to do this. And one of the conversations is, we need it all, the needs and wants. The messaging would have to take place over all that.
Got it. And so then my next two questions are probably, or possibly more for Stephanie. So I'm curious, because I'm just not remembering some of our earlier discussions in enough detail. For how many years would the tax increase be actually at the maximum level? Wouldn't it decrease over time as part of the principal was paid down?
In short, yes.
Okay, does it go down by a significant amount each year or an insignificant amount?
It all depends upon when you go out for bonding, what the interest rates are, what the terms are. There's the ability, you know, we've done in the past where we've been able to refinance those bonds and still pay them off in the same amount of time, but at a lower cost. So, but, but yes, where you're starting is at the high point.
Okay, and I get why that wouldn't have been part of the messaging in the survey, but I guess one of my takeaways, and I think I just each time participated in the phone surveys, is that it comes across as a permanent tax increase. Unless you have a lot more knowledge about how bonds work, you know, so, or that, you know, say it's a 30-year bond, that it would be 125, 175, or 225 for the life of the bond. I think without additional explanation, that's, I'm guessing that's an assumption many people would make, when in fact, it does go down over time.
Well, so you're not, you're not wrong. It's a good observation. This is about getting you to where you want to be to make a decision to move forward or not move forward. I keep going back to this critical education that that aspect of what you were saying will come forth. That will be part of the messaging.
Sure.
This is for 20, 25, whatever. I don't know if you guys have the ability to go out to 30 years. Were you included in that? You were, okay, I wasn't sure if it was just schools. So this last summer, the general assembly passed legislation that allows you to go to 30-year bonds, which obviously costs more over interest, but is less per year as a payment. Catch and, it's a give and take there.
Is that, are those the figures that we're working with? And I understand they're ballpark.
Yes, we were working off a 30-year bond.
Okay. And so then my third question has to do with home rule. My understanding is that if we did have home rule, and I do understand all the complexities about getting there, we would be able to bond as we go? And Stephanie, can you just explain to me again what that means?
Sure, so with home rule, you don't have to go to referendum for each bond issuance. You can bond as you go, in other words, so you could bond for your first project. You could figure out based on EAV and bond payments and kind of level out those payments over time, rather than seeing perhaps a decrease with one bond issuance. You'll see the same amount across the full time, but yet you've issued multiple bonds within there. Does that make sense?
So you wouldn't have to go to referendum at all?
That's correct.
Okay, the city would then have the authority to go to bond, and there would be some commensurate. The city would then have the authority to go to bond, and there would be some commensurate increase in property taxes to fund the repayment of the bond?
That's correct.
Okay. Among the, again, the myriad other benefits that Home Rule would convey, okay. I guess, I, I for one, I do understand some of the pitfalls of considering putting Home Rule on, on the ballot, but I guess, I think it's interesting to me that it's, at least at a surface level, favorable, because I think my starting assumption would have been contrary to that, as I think was expressed at our, our last meeting. I sort of, I guessed that there would be a gut favorable or disfavorable reaction to it. And I do know that at least in the phone survey, it was couched in a way that this would, you know, make parts of this process as well as other things easier. But I guess that, that, I for one, am interested in continuing to explore that. I don't know whether others on the council agree, but it seems like, I, it, it seems interesting to me, particularly given that there is a heavy lift to do in terms of education one way or another. And it seems like one way of looking at it is that if we were able to mount a robust education program about the benefits of Home Rule, then that would get us not only the ability to really fix facility problems that have been growing over time, but also, you know, have other benefits that I don't have to get into here. So, I, I for one, am interested to explore that a bit more, not necessarily committed to any particular course of action, but I guess I, I'm wary of Option Two or even a hybrid option because I really see all of the, all of the proposed items in Option Three as, as needs, I think. And I think that the costs over time to taxpayers actually will go up pretty dramatically if, if we're not able to start fixing things. And I, anyway, so, that's where I am right now. I will leave it there. Thanks.
Alder Person Kassarag.
I guess, to try to get to some consensus here, I think that what we're trying to do tonight is, oh. To get to some consensus here, which is, I think, what we're trying to do tonight. You know, I guess I have a million questions about, I guess, the data and how things worked, but, and, and I agree with Alderman, Alder Person Bowring about Home Rule, but I think right now, sort of the time is right to what we're hearing, what I'm hearing from, from you, is the time is right to really go to referendum. I think, at least for me, let's go for what we can that is likely to succeed and get started on this. And I don't, you know, I would love to get to Home Rule, I just, I just don't, I guess I agree that this isn't the right time with a small turnout election and possibly being overwhelmed, because I, I think all of us here are expecting that. So, me personally, I'm in favor of the hybrid option. And, and I think I'll just leave it at that, so that we can try to maybe get somewhere here. If it's, if I'm not mistaken, Stephanie, we're trying to come to a consensus tonight so that if we do want to move forward, we're writing the referendum before the next meeting and then passing that at the next meeting to be.
So, if I may, maybe kind of what we've, we've envisioned, if there's a consensus tonight that this council wants to move forward with something for the April referendum, we would like to have an idea of what that is, so we could work with bond council, have draft language, bring that forward to the January 6th Committee of the Whole, so for there'd be more discussion at that meeting. And then, at the January 13th, where we already have a special committee of the whole scheduled for budget presentation, we would add a special city council meeting to adopt whatever ordinance and language that you would like to see on the ballot, because that is the last possible date that you could do that.
Thank you. So, I, I would just throw out there more for discussion, but it's something I would support, which is the recommendation for the, for the hybrid option that includes Option Two plus Fire Station Number Two, if I'm not mistaken? Does that kind of sum it up?
Generally, yes. That, that would be the community's choice to move forward on what they gave us the most favorability in ranking. As I said, this process is about listening to the community and listening to what they have to say, and then taking the best parts and moving forward with those. There might be some things you have to do, don't get me wrong, but we want to lead with our strengths.
Well, I 100% agree with the education campaign and don't want to leave anything to chance, like maybe some of your other clients have in the past, as you mentioned. So, you know, that's where I'm at here. I'm pretty excited that we got such a favorable rating on everything. I honestly didn't expect that. And so, I, I don't know, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there and, and see what other people agree or think about that hybrid option and whether or not we want to try to do that for, before our next meeting in January.
Alder Person Patschke has not yet spoken. Alder Person Patschke, the floor is yours.
I guess I would echo Alder Person Kassarag. I, I could definitely support the hybrid option, I think with the, the data in front of us. My concern or my hesitation is, I think we all agree that the full scope is really needed at this point, and so, my concern is what we would be lacking or giving up by not going for Option Three and what we would potentially lose by not having a full education outreach and trying to condense it. Even for the hybrid, I feel like there's still so much misunderstanding and lack of awareness and knowledge in the community that a very abbreviated period of education, even for the hybrid option, worries me a bit, that we're not going to get enough of the community to a point of understanding the needs, and then, at the same time, we're giving up those additional items that we know that we need that are in the full scope. So, I, I would actually probably prefer to do the year-long education program and go with Option Three and 26, but I could get on board with the hybrid option.
Yeah, and our job is just to give you those options, what we have seen over time, what the data is telling us. And so, you're 100% right on everything you just said.
Alder Person Mayor and Kilburg wish to speak a second time. For those who have not yet spoken, do you care to do so now, or should I move on to those who wish to speak a second time? Second time it is Mayor than Kilburg.
Thank you. This is more for Administrator Dawkins, probably. Do we have confidence that the consultant, so it's been a while since we've seen anything from consultants or space planning, any, anything to do with this. Do we feel pretty comfortable that they sit ready to provide collateral material to support these options? When the library went to referendum, there was quite a bit of documentation and images, particularly, I think people are talking about vision. Renderings really help in these situations? Do we, you feel comfortable that we can get that?
So, they've actually been working with us as we've gone through this process to help figure out what we could achieve for what dollars. And I think in talking with them, we wouldn't have actual like renderings of buildings, but we would have renderings of those space needs. So, it's a, it's a spatial thing rather than an actual architectural drawing, because you're not going to want to expend the funds to have, to go to that extreme if it's not going to pass. That's kind of, you want to wait until you know that there's the support there for the space needs, because that's what we did. We did a, we did a programmatic space needs facility master plan versus, you know, the building looks like X, Y, or Z.
Right. So, it wouldn't have the extent of development that we, we had when we went to referendum for the library would be?
And I, I don't recall, and I know Bob just left, but I don't recall what, what they had for their, before they went to referendum. I know what they did after the fact, but I don't remember, I don't recall what they did first.
Yeah, I don't really either. Now that, now that I'm thinking about it, I'm not sure when, when all the pretty pictures came into the.
Right. And typically, they come later, I think.
Yes.
Because, again, you don't want to get hung up on what it looks like versus what the need is.
Yeah, I think it's imagine, it's imagining, though, that it becomes a difficult.
But we would have like square footage.
Part of your messaging is explaining that, well, we're a fiscally conservative community, we're not going to spend the money until we know, and yet again, we're going to have another round of community engagement to talk about what we're going to do. And so, that's how you message that whole concept, is that should you reward us with a favorable vote, we then want the community to come back and say, okay, here's, now we're going to start building this out. We want to talk to the community, we want to see your additional input, and obviously, staff is going to be a big part of that as well. You're going to want to have your staff input on what's going on in the actual building of certain things, but you can also message that to the community as well, and, and you should.
So, I feel like Option Two, the hybrid option, is not going to deliver the office space that's required for this building, and, and that's what I'm kind of sensing is to give. We would probably get accessibility for this building, but you would be sacrificing the modern office space, and we'd still have people in the basement and maybe, would the mechanical upgrades be included so that people wouldn't be freezing?
Right. If you look at the light, if it's okay, and if I jump in here, so, Option Two, give me one second, I'm just going to find the question. So, Option Two, you would get the infrastructure and mechanicals, you would get safety and security, you would get the historic preservation, accessibility, and then some technology and some space. So, again, it would not be, the Civic Center is the connector, there would be no connector.
Okay. It would be a standalone.
A standalone.
Original, historic building as.
A meeting space, maybe?
Yeah, an auxiliary space for the community or something like that, but just kind of buttoned up and not as expensive as having a full connector between the two. Okay. I mean, I'm really happy to hear that we have support in general from the survey. I, I think that I'm confident that as people learn more about this, that they'll support it as well. I wish, I felt that we could just go for Option Three, but I think that doing a hybrid is probably the smart move here, and I really do want to see this happen for this community, so I, I support going forward with hybrid.
And if I may just add one more point, because I've heard Alder Person Patschke and Mayor say the same thing, keep in mind that Option Three was already a reduced scope from, from the first survey. So, even Option Three doesn't get you everything that you said you needed.
That we want, right.
Because that was already, had been reduced based upon the, the results from Phase Two.
Well, and I'm worried about doing, doing a pulled-back approach, because this is how we got a fire station on the west side that's residential-grade furnaces and things like that inside, and how we have a building that has so many additions as the police station that no longer really suits modern-day technology. So, I'd really like to go for everything, but I think it's more important to be doing this now. The only other question I had was, do we have any kind of financial analysis of what the Home Rule benefit on, like an interest cost for the projects would be?
Not at this time.
No.
I mean, we can probably ask our bond council what that might look like, but I don't have that tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm supportive of Option Two plus, plus, plus.
Alder Person Kilburg, then Marx, then Malachi, then Bruno.
We've used the term hybrid, and again, I think we, we, we were aware of what was originally intended as it related to the east-side fire station. I'd like to know more specifics about what the hybrid would include, and is that going to meet our needs long-term, or is this a short-term stopgap effort to make the facility more functional? And, you know, we were talking about a new structure, and now, we're talking about a hybrid. Well.
Sure.
I guess, I had, I'd have questions about, what are we going to do there? Where are we going to build? Are we going to build on to it, or we're just making internal improvements to the structure? How does it make it a more functional and a more effective fire station for the city? And we're talking pretty generally here now, and we're talking about six, four to $6 million is what you were saying, 66 to 72, 74? I mean, I think those were the numbers you threw out. You know, you tweak it by about four to 6 million. You know, what can you do with four to 6 million that's going to benefit the residents and, and their home security?
You're talking about the hybrid, right?
The hybrid, yeah. I mean, you know.
Well, you're, you're 19 million between the two, so 66 to 85, you know, if you, if you went 10 above.
I thought, I thought you used the number 72.
72 to 75, I, I think it could be higher.
Well, that would be the nine mil, that would be 9 million, wouldn't it?
But that, that's on top of what the Option Two is. So, Option Two already includes some renovations to the fire station. So, if you're, if you're doing a hybrid, then that would include more major renovations. Option Two and Three, neither of those include a new fire station.
Right, right, okay.
You know, our, our discussion would be.
I mean, initially, though, we were talking about a new fire station.
Correct. That was on Phase Two, correct.
Yeah. So, I guess, do we have any concept plans, or we have any kind of a listing as it relates to what this would include?
So, I would say that we've already started that process. That's Phase Four. So, we're here with you to give our recommendations on, so we know that 85 million and the 225 is a, is a, is an absolute upper limit. And so, if you're like below 80, it's a, it's a number, you know, once again, 70, in the 70s versus the 80s, or under 200 versus 225. It's, it's the conceptual part of that, of where is that sweet spot? And that's what we're going to talk about. It's, the sweet spot also includes what you think you need to do, because, as I said, we believe that going at the Option Three, you could do just a big, heavy lift. So, what do you do to get below that, to get to this sweet spot of needs, wants versus what the community thinks they, they, they would support and be their plan? That's ultimately where we're trying to get at.
I guess, I, I'd be interested in hearing feedback as it relates to the fire department and what their feedback would be as it relates to the hybrid.
Yeah, and that's, that's the city council along with your administration, and we're here to.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I've got a great idea of what a new police station will look like. I got a great idea of what we're intending to do here with the library and City Hall. It's just, I don't have a very good vision as to what we're talking about, Wester Randall. I mean.
There it is. Your turn.
Huh?
Station towards West.
And I'd like to hear, you know, I'd like to have feedback from the fire department to say, yeah, this is going to make residential protection as it relates to our fire department and the response from the station much more effective. And that's all I'm asking for, and I, I think that's important to note, too, and, and I think as we make a decision, I think that would be good for us to see, too, in advance.
100%, and that needs, wants analysis probably could be.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, I'd like to see it, though.
Could be done now as we're building it for, but then, the benefits and all the other things come in the education.
Yeah.
And so, talking to your fire chief, all right, if you get this, what are the benefits? What are, what is, what is, how does it change the trajectory of safety in our community? And we'll get those.
And I'm sure that they would be involved in talking about what the hybrid would look like.
Absolutely.
Gotcha.
Alder Person Marx. Marx, Malachi, Bruno, Ruby.
Hi, Option Two with hybrid is the safe bet. I agree with that, that, that's a good move forward. I'm going to ask some questions that are, probably haven't been asked, but I, I want to know, because it's an education process. Can you go with referendum on just a off-election, have a special election for this? And if so, could we push it out? Yeah? No, you can't do it for that?
No, it's going to be on state election.
It has to be, okay. I didn't know that, that's why I was asking.
It has to be on a state-authorized election.
It has to be on the state, you can't go for, because I was wondering if you, you could get that extra time to do that education and not wait a whole year. Because I was wondering if you could get that extra time to do that education and not wait a whole year. But, okay, I didn't know that. That's why you're here. But, you know, I would love to go for option three, but I don't think we have enough time to educate. So, you know, I think we go with the safe bet. That's really what you're kind of telling us, and that's what we paid for.
It's the safer bet.
It's the safest bet. And I would say, I'm in for option two plus, plus.
Alderperson Malachi, Bruno, Ruby.
A few, hopefully just quick ones. A real quick question, following up with home rule again and our bonding eligibility. If we're a home-rule community, we're still capped on amount of bonds we'd be able to take out. Like, even though we could, don't have to go out for referendum for bonds, we just can't bond and bond and bond. Like, we're capped, like a...
You are capped.
We have like a limit, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. If we... I would assume that there's been discussion, too, with, throughout the process, that if we end up going through things and there's, we get to option one or hybrid option two slash three, that there's some sort of contingency plan or something to start taking care of some of the needs that might not get addressed through the bonding, correct?
Correct. I mean, we already currently do some capital improvements as we go. So yes, there is still, that would still be a portion of this. So the facilities we're not talking about, which are Public Works and Fire Station Number One, there would still be some improvements, but they would be, they wouldn't be major renovations or anything like that.
So sooner or later, the community and council are going to have to cross those bridges eventually.
Potentially.
To hit the certain things. And then just sort of two, just sort of comments to add to the thing. I mean, my gut, I mean, I know municipal, you know, the consolidated elections are typically lower turnout. I think Geneva's a fairly well-engaged community overall. My gut feeling is that, I don't know, when it comes to the question here with home rule or, you know, the facilities question. Turnout may be okay, you know, especially if you have more questions on the ballot. So I don't know if I'd be too worried about, you know, having like a, you know, a small minority of the population swinging things one way or another with turnout in this election. I think Geneva's a pretty engaged community overall. And then the only other sort of concern I guess I have, if we end up agreeing, you know, on consensus for option three and going for the whole nine yards, do we have, is that for everybody involved? Is that too much, at the same time type thing? We have the, you know, is there enough confidence with us to, as a governing body and council, to help that process go smoothly? I assume like, if, I guess my question is if, like, all our, if we go option three, we go for, you know, we ask for everything and it passes referendum and the community, you know, says yes, what's the scheduling for those projects? Is it, is it, is everything just going to be going, like, soon?
Do you have a construction manager online?
Am I asking these questions before too soon in the process?
So there's two answers. You would have your architects build all this out. You have, let me remember now. You have three years to use the bonds and five years to complete the work. I believe that's state law. And you would hire a construction manager most likely to move forward with the implementation of the projects and how they, that's their job. That's what they do. They work with your architects to get all that done on a timely manner with as least disruption to public services as possible.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, I was just asking, because we've been talking about money and this and that. Just, I was just sort of thinking about the personal aspect of it.
Yes, the state requires you to let the bonds within a specific timeframe and actually do the construction within a specific timeline. And that's why you hire experts to help guide you through that. Some folks, school districts, municipalities, might have internal construction managers, not a lot.
Right, cool, okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Alderperson Bruno, then Ruby.
Thank you. Well, whatever we choose, I've got misgivings about the whole process. All of these options, even option three, still calls a lot of important stuff in terms of what I think plays into employee retention, types of services, type of environments that they live in or in work in. The discussion's out in the public now, so I don't think we should lowball it here. We're still going to be discussing this in future meetings. You know, even option three is less than I think we deserve for the long-term good of the community. But if the consensus is two-point-five, I'm willing to keep that on the table and see where the discussion goes. Thanks.
Alderperson Ruby, then Swanson.
Thank you. I feel like the needs are identified of what the community needs as far as all of these improvements. I don't think there's any advantage to whittling it down. I feel like if we rush into a partial solution, we're going to regret that. We need to focus on community education. We could maybe ask the library for advice, insight, ask them about their timeline on the community education aspect. And my big concern about April is not, you know, what we're going to push, but is there time to run a campaign and to really educate our residents for an April election? That seems unrealistic to me in my experience, but I'm asking. I'm not sure.
No, it's, we have been hired with eight weeks to get this entire process done and then go into the education phase. Now, remember, education phase is post-board vote on the thirteenth. At that point, your education phase is from then to the election. It would be our suggestion that you would have the PAC, political, the education, the city, running parallel. I could get into more detail on that at some point if need be, but you would have multiple outlets to inform the public, obviously, on the educational side. And then you get a group of citizens that would run the, what is called the "yes" campaign. We have a separate company. We don't, we value not mixing this, because what can destroy a referendum, and we've just recently seen this down in Rochester Library, where they got commingled. You don't want that, because that will doom your referendum. That's why strategically, we have two companies, one to do the political end, one to do the governmental end. So there's no crossing the lasers. But yes, so to answer your question in a long-about way, I guess, yeah, I think there is time. There's no doubt. We've done it in less time. We've been brought on to run all of this the day after the vote. So yes, we could get that done. The good thing is you have an engaged community. You have a community, and this is what the data is telling us. If you didn't already have that in place, the data would show that you would not have favorabilities the way you have. So people already trust you. And so that trust is going to buy you some good time and working with your community. And that's the good part of that, and that's one of the reasons why we can, you know, feel comfortable making the recommendations we do, because you have an informed community. We believe they're informed. Otherwise, they would not have the favorability and giving us a favorability on the different options as well.
Alderperson Swanson, forgive me.
Thank you. I think it's interesting that we're talking about three options here without even seeing what they are. And I think that's really difficult for any of us to envision. And basically, all we're doing is we're saying there's an uncomfortability at eighty-five million, sixty-six million, or seventy-two million, maybe not so much, so we ought to go that. I think if we were to take any sort of vote, certainly on January sixth or whatever that meeting date is, I would like to see what exactly we're proposing here. What is option one, option two, option two-point-three, and option three? And to do that in a vacuum, I think is not doing, it's a disservice to what we're trying to accomplish here. So, yes, I think we need option three. And if it means waiting a year, why are we rushing to get this done by April if we're going to have to do this again a year and a half later? So if it takes a year to do the education piece, it seems to me to make sense that we ought to go for everything that's necessary now, unless there is something that tells us we have got to do this immediately. And that's the piece I'm not hearing, is the urgency, why the April election is where we have to go. So my inclination would be, go for option three, but take the time to educate the community to get all that we need as opposed to doing it piecemeal. So I would strongly recommend that we do that. If there's an overriding reason that we have to go to referendum in April, then the hybrid option two plus, I suppose, would be the next best. But number one, I would like to see, what are these options? What are the pieces? And make an informed decision. But my inclination is to go for option three with the education piece. And if it takes a year, perhaps that's the best option. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Bowring, then Kozarog.
So, yeah, I really echo what I'm hearing from Alderpersons Ruby and Swanson. I think option three is already, and actually, as Alderperson Bruno noted, option three is already eliminating things that we've identified, I would say, as needs, not wants. I mean, I think we've taken everything off that's wants, and we've pared it down, and these are overdue needs. So I'm frankly most interested either in whatever gets us a solid path to option three or exploring home rule, because I think home rule gives us the latitude to make sure that we are protecting and taking care of our infrastructure and facility needs over the long term. I understand that would be, you know, a more extensive education campaign as well. But I'm just, so, and I also echo what Alderperson Swanson said. I keep looking through to see if there's something that I've missed, but I don't really understand what these options are. I took the phone survey, but I don't recall all of what was listed out. And I, I'm not comfortable really giving a lot of direction without understanding what it is that we're considering. I don't, you know, Alderperson Mayor was asking about it, and I, yeah, I mean, I guess I hadn't understood even from the phone survey that option three didn't include building a new fire station on the west side. So I think that needs to be a lot clearer. And then my inclination is to make sure we actually do start addressing these needs, I think, in the long term, even if we see a five to six percent price increase. If we're able to actually do more, because we can help the public understand why we think these are needed and necessary and actually a good investment for the city and its future, then I think that that is worth some increase. You know, I think that I, yeah, so, thank you.
Alderperson Kozarog.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I can't disagree with what Alderperson Swanson said. But at the same time, I think, what is the urgency? Or, well, I guess I'm not convinced option three is ever going to succeed. I mean, I think that's one of the things. So we wait for a year, and then what, we start over just to make sure, maybe? I don't know if there's an abbreviated version, but then we find out now nobody wants the stomach option three. Maybe there was a ton of inflation over that year. Everything could change, and now we're nowhere. We haven't done anything for our staff and our community. And to me, that's the worst option here, is to do nothing. And I think, why now? Why not in a year from now or two years from now? It's because we all agreed to start this process when we did and hire him and get this process going. Now it's a conversation in the community. Now people are aware of it. Now, I think we're probably all getting text messages from friends and constituents asking about this, asking about how much it's going to cost on their bill, asking about the necessity of it. And so I think that that's the reason we need to move forward now, even if it doesn't take care of all of our goals. And I agree that it doesn't, but seventy million is a ton of money. And I think that if you would ask the average taxpayer in Geneva, hey, we're not going to ask you for seven D-million, because we're going to ask you for a hundred million in a year or two, I don't think that makes any taxpayer feel better, even if there is an education campaign out there. I'm just not sure there's enough education that you can give somebody to get them to agree to two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars or more, and another five or 10 percent. So the way I see it is, the momentum's there, the favorability is there, the need is there. And I think that's why we need to go with it now. And to me, again, I said this the first time I spoke, I mean, we're getting positive feedback on option two plus a little bit more. I think that's awesome. I don't know why, to me, the council here is, seems disappointed to me, is what I'm kind of hearing, where I'm like the exact opposite. I'm super excited to get this going. I, I think we will get more details. The public will get more details. I have a hard time believing, I think Alderman Kilburg said, well, we'd like to hear from Chief Antonori about the fire department stuff. And I don't disagree. I'd love to hear what he has to say. But I have a feeling he's going to say, everything you can give me would help. That's the bottom line. I don't think he's going to say, you're right, let's not do anything for two years or one year, and then let's see if maybe you can give me more. He wants to get done what he can get done. I'm not saying there's not a future battle, or, battle's not the right word. I'm not saying there's not future issues that we're going to have to deal with and conquer and resolve. But we got to start somewhere. We haven't done anything for decades, literally. And to me, that's why I support, you know, something like the hybrid model that we've been discussing. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Mayor.
Well, before Brad talked, I was all going to be, let's go for option three. But I think that you're, you've presented a balanced opinion that I kind of agree with, that we should be, I think we should be confident that as the public learns about this, they're going to get behind what we're proposing here, because it is actually important. And our employees that work for the city do a great service for us. And everybody can see that in the police, because we all, I think people are very inclined to support the police and a new facility. When you see an employee sitting in a windowless office that was a stage that's been built in by temporary walls, here, you think, what has happened here that we don't have adequate facilities for our employees? And how can we most expediently fix that problem? I think that's where I'm coming back to, okay, maybe two-plus-plus is a good way to approach this, because we'll succeed. And succeeding's the most important thing when it comes to giving our, the people that work for the city and do a great service for us. For, I think, on a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, the service cost is five-hundred dollars a year. That's less than Netflix, so, or maybe not, but, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, we're paying for internet quite a bit more than that a year, and this is for our police and fire and people that work for our city. We've completely dropped Public Works out of the picture, which is unfortunate. We've completely dropped Public Works out of the picture, which is unfortunate, because their facilities also need improvements. But I do want this to pass, and I want to get busy with this consultants to progress the designs and get going on this. Because the reality is that option three is 85 million dollars today, next year it could be 90 million dollars. So that, it's 5 million dollars of escalation that we're talking about. And that's why it's more important to do something now than waiting. And...
Another way to put that is, 85 million dollars in five years could be 5 million less, based on inflation, of things you could build if you kept it the same number. Which, you're talking about going to 75 to 78, whichever that is.
You're going to get less value next year than you're going to get right now if we went out and got and bought something, because...
Unless you went from 85 to 90. You know, so then you're going up. That's just the mathem, you brought the mathematics up.
Right, right. You would get less value, or you would have to increase the amount.
That was the point I was trying to make.
Okay. So I think, even though we should do option three, I think it's best to go for option two and a half, and try to win this thing.
Alderperson Malicki.
Just touching on Alderperson Swanson again, with things. If we decide to move this forward now, coming up for the Hittler referendum, no matter what option we choose, if we're, you know, being tagged also as the ambassadors behind the project, and having to talk to our residents, yeah, I would hope that we could, there's going to be some more tools in the toolbox. Because, like, you know, Alderman, Alderperson Swanson said, is, most people, you know, you talk to them enough and give them the gist of what's going on, but people still want to see what they're getting for the money. You know, they still, people still go to the car dealer and kick the tires before they, you know, they buy the car. So, I know it's a quick process, but, you know, if we do decide to move forward quickly, then, I guess I'm asking what kind of, or what kind of other tools we're going to be able to have to work with to help educate the community. I mean, it would be, I don't expect, you know, issued for construction drawings type of thing to look at, but, you know, something more than just, you know, it's going to be great, would be helpful.
Yeah, and we have, again, we have, we have the space needs, the programmatic needs, what it looks like, what the mechanic, we have all of that information. That wasn't what this process was about. So once there's a determination to go forward, then we, and even when we, when we decide on a hybrid, I will come back to you on the sixth and say, this is what this dollar amount can include. It won't be specifically down to, you know, the square footage per se, but what I can say is, it's going to address the mechanicals, it's going to address the safety and security, or what those benefits are. So, I mean, we have a lot of information, it's just that wasn't, because of the format they use, is to, is to find out just on first blush, what do people think?
On the education side, here's what you have, here's what it could be. And so you don't have to have a drawing of what you're going to do, and we wouldn't recommend you do that. Because why spend the money until you know you're going to get the ability to do that? But you can take a picture of kind of the warts, if you will, of things that you're trying to replace, here's what other communities have done, here's what it could look like. And so people can get that visual, and we would obviously recommend that you're going to go out to the district, obviously, we would, should you bring us on to do this, put together a presentation, to put together, you know, outreach, depending on your budget. We always recommend doing what's called a full details mailer. It's at one point before the election takes place, maybe two weeks out, three weeks out, put together a mailer of, here's all what we're doing, here's the benefits, here's what it looks like, here's what it could look like. It's, be about a four-page fold-up. So yes, that is part of the community outreach.
As before, early voting?
Um, so, I don't know how much detail you want me to get into this, but...
Not much, not much.
Okay.
I think we're, 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 yeah, we want to focus on consensus with regard to what option, as opposed to campaign strategy. But back to the original option, Alderperson Bowring after Malicki then Kilburg.
May I just ask real quick, I guess, point in procedure, are we looking for a motion tonight, or just consensus?
Consensus is fine.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Bowring then Kilburg.
Thank you. Yeah, could you just, at a very general level, take us through what is included, or is imagined to be included under option one, option two, and option three? I understand the police station is included under each, the city hall under option two? What was that? Like, what all is envisioned for that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so in all options, the, it includes the police station, which is the must-do on the police station only, no, no extra additives. Option two then included the current city hall with a small square foot addition that would address accessibility primarily, and some technology, and maybe a little bit of space, but mostly it's to get the building accessible. We're looking at, and again, we would have to refine these numbers, but a 10,000 square foot addition. And then it would include demoing the former library building, but retaining the original 4,000 square foot historic structure, and finishing off those walls that will now be exposed, and making that a standalone facility, be it a meeting space, or, we don't know yet programmatically what that would be. And then with option two, for fire station, it would just be minor renovations. So again, looking primarily probably at mechanicals. In option three, we're looking at police station, the city hall with the library that had the full connector building between the two, so that they, you're addressing now your space needs and everything else, but again, on the must-do. And then there would be some significant improvements to the fire station, which would be including living quarters, locker rooms, more of a full-scale kind of renovation, but not a new facility, and likely not additional space.
Okay, can you, I'm not great at envisioning 10,000 square, so the connector between city hall and the old historic part of the library, that, sorry, that's imagined to be 15,000 square feet?
15,000 square feet.
Okay, so something short of that, but...
And without the finished basement, because that was an extra.
Sorry, without the finished basement, for what?
We had, one of the alternates for city hall was a finished basement, because the old library has a basement, and to continue that on over, that would exclude that, it would just be the connector 15,000 square feet to house the front-facing offices and an elevator and those things.
Sorry, but that's for option three? So for option two, it's the 10,000 square feet and no basement, and, but it doesn't fully connect the buildings?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't have, I think everybody has to recognize, we were just working with, quickly through, what could we accomplish, at what dollar point, to see what the community would buy into.
Sure.
Once we know what's, now, once we've narrowed this down, I can give, I can look back at the documents and be like, okay, it looks like we can do this.
In the final phase four plan, which we're going to come with week-ish?
Can you resess?
Yeah. We've already started that process.
I'm sorry, so what we've been discussing with option two is this hybrid, or the hybrid would possibly include a bit more for the fire station, but we're not sure exactly what?
Correct. It would be option two plus extra for the fire department, fire station number two.
Okay, like locker rooms, or for the women?
We'll bring that back to you next week on the sixth. I don't have that information this evening.
Sure. Okay. Um, okay, well, again, I do understand the way the process is structured, but I feel like it's hard, given that, for me, what's driving the process is trying to really meet the specific needs. And I keep thinking about, like, I mean, people are bulking at, or it sounds like the breaking point is going from like $200 a year on average to $225 a year. And I, I'm not arguing with the data, I understand that's where people's mindsets are right now, but I guess, I guess I feel like if, if the, if the lift is trying to convince people that they should spend 25 more dollars a year for a limited period of time, in order to have substantially more significant improvements, that I think would be like a much better investment for the city, I guess I feel like that's an education campaign that I would want the city to engage in, whether it was for April, or whether it was for a year from now. I do understand, you know, the inflation costs are unknown, and then there's kind of the anticipated rise in costs, but I think, again, to me, the danger is that if we do meet some of these needs, but not all of these needs, it might genuinely hurt our ability to meet the rest of the needs down the line, if, it sounds like the consultant is recommending that that does wind up seeming off to people, well, you can't, you know, you asked for 75 million a couple of years ago, and now you're asking for what, another 40 years, whatever, and, you know, again, there's a limit on how much we can bond. So, I don't know, given, given that we're looking, we're looking mainly at what our financial constraints are, and I do understand that they're real, I feel like trying to match that up with what is actually a good plan for the city, does feel genuinely hard for me to have a clear idea about without a bit more information. So, anyway, thank you for filling that in, I do appreciate that, thanks.
Alderperson Kilburg.
Quickly, quick history lesson in Geneva. In 2007, school district passed a referendum that built Williamsburg and Fabian. It passed by about 200 votes. If that would have been delayed another year, we'd have been into 2008. And in 2008, the world turned, and things changed dramatically. There was a tax revolt, and those buildings wouldn't have been built for, I don't think, another decade. So I'm just saying, if we're looking at this, all of something is more than, something of something is a lot more than all of nothing. And I'm just saying, the economy is, I think, generally pretty good. Unemployment is low, interest rates have come down dramatically. People, if they look at their 401Ks, I think they made a lot of money in 2024. I think people have had raises. So if we're looking for a climate to pass a referendum, I think the next 90 days, 120 days, is going to be very favorable. So a year and a half, the world can turn and change pretty dramatically.
So the other thing that you just said, you said a referendum was passed in 2007, more likely with a 20-year bond, that same school district will be gearing up for another referendum in '27. So that starts getting into the stratosphere as well, as something that someone asked earlier about other referendums and how they impact it. The school district will start to talk about that coming up in the next couple of years, because nobody wants rolloff debt to go away, would be my assumption.
Well, here we are. Now, I will ask the city administrator to at least articulate what she believes to be the consensus.
Well, I believe consensus I've heard is a hybrid of the option two plus. Again, not unanimous, but it sounds like that's kind of the consensus. I would bring that back for discussion purposes on the sixth at the Cal.
And to be clear, the discussion purposes will also have language?
Referendum language.
Draft language referendum, as prescribed by, with advice from Chapman and Cutler, et cetera, our bond counsel.
Correct.
And of course, as we all know, that language is oftentimes archaic and confusing as all hell.
And part of our consulting is to help make that less archaic, and more favorable to what the community wants.
Sorry to be another repeater again. I'm really worried that finance isn't going to fit into this building if we go for the hybrid without enough square footage in this project. Because we're going to be moving the police station over there, we're going to want to abandon that building, and to add more people into this office space is absolutely out of the question. So I would want to hear that we can do an addition that would at least accommodate a front-facing office that would deal with our finances.
So that's some of what I'll be doing in the next five days, is calculating out what that square footage looks at, based on our plans. And I say five days only because there is a holiday, and we have to have the packet out for the sixth by the third, second, so. So, yeah, I agree, and I'd be careful too, about some of the language too, because abandoning is not, we would be, we would be doing something with that as well.
Right, we would just let it decay.
But yes, finance needs a home.
Right. But, and more than that, I mean, our building department is in an inaccessible area as well. I mean, it's just hard to cut this down, so. Getting to where I want option three, my opinion is option three now.
I believe there's still consensus on option 2.5, whatever the hell we're calling it, but, yeah. And what's not determined yet, but what can be determined on the sixth, is what is that, what is that hybrid number? Between 66 and 85 is, appears to be the ramparts of that. We have to determine exactly what that number is.
Just really quick, I guess my, yeah...
Correct. Correct.
My only hesitancy with the hybrid, or anything with like option two, is just not doing things correctly. Like, we saw with the police station, is all of a sudden you just keep taking something that's bad, and adding a little bit of wrapping paper around it. So, you know, my thought is, if we're going to do these options on some of these buildings, that, I guess it doesn't, we can always revisit that, I guess, depending on the actual dollar amount that goes, that goes through with it, but maybe on the road, just have the discussion and make sure that, we try to focus our efforts on doing the best we can with the money, instead of, you know, trying to just help things along for a few five, six years down the road, so, if that makes sense. I don't know if that makes, it makes sense to me, but, yeah.
Stephanie, are you comfortable? Alderperson Patschke.
I just want to clarify that I was down as my preference being option three. I said I could get on board with hybrid, if that was the consensus, but my preference is for option three, with spending the dedicated time needed for education.
So, I mean, I mean, we can go around and say what everybody's preferences, I mean, it's, it's, it's not against the meeting rules, because this was...
Correct, it was posted.
Noticed, it was said there would be a discussion, but at this point, between the threes, the weights, and the hybrid, I have lost the consensus.
Alderperson Patschke, what is your preference?
Option three.
Alderperson Kozarog.
Two plus.
Alderperson Swanson.
Three.
Alderperson Bruno.
Three.
Alderperson Ruby. Alderperson, isn't Mayor?
Yes, three.
Alderperson Marks.
Two hybrid.
Alderperson Malicki.
Three.
Alderperson Kilburg.
Two.
Alderperson Bowring.
Three.
And just to clarify, because I had heard earlier on some that said three, you actually had said wait a year, so now, are you saying three in April?
Right, we got to put time parameters on this now, because we just moved.
So...
So it's three in April, or three in a year?
Is there anyone opposed to go into referendum, irrespective of what choice we make, in April?
I think community education is a key element.
Okay. You may hate me for this, but this hasn't been brought up at all, because we haven't really, are we going to continue possibly talking about home rule, or is that dead? Thinking back, or thinking strategically, I'm thinking if we want to possibly consider home rule on the referendum, then maybe we go for option one and home rule.
I don't believe you can go for both on a single vote, correct or incorrect?
Two separate referendums.
Two separate referendums. Same ballot, but...
Hold on, hold on. Say it again, Sandek.
It would be two questions.
Hold on, hold on. Say it again, Sandek.
It would be two questions.
Two questions.
On the same ballot.
On the same ballot.
We could do as many as three questions.
Correct.
Which would be, well, challenging.
Well, yeah, you, you, I mean, does it To Alderperson Malicki's query, are there folks still interested in exploring a home rule option?
In April.
In April.
No.
You have one.
One. So we have two in essence. So the chair rules that that is no longer a priority. Anyone else? Stephanie? Now we're back to April referendum, folks. Every, everyone can change their mind come January 6th, of course, but with regard to structure and the language for consideration and the agenda for the sixth, it's my interpretation that this council seems to have reached consensus regarding either option three and for the benefit of including said language and dollar amounts at two and a half or eliminate the two and a half altogether. We can create both. It's not an issue. Same
I, I think what I heard is, is there's a consensus for option three. Along with that, the council would like to know what improvements that means for the fire station because that, that's the one that has lesser, it would be the full police, it would be the full city hall as imagined with the civic center, and then it would be those dollars that are left over. What does that do for the fire station? Is that correct?
I think so. Alderperson Kilburg certainly asked that. Swanson?
Would it be difficult to provide us both options so that we can compare the
No, I, I will be doing, yeah.
So to me, that seems to be the best answer is then we can have a little more information for January 6th.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay. January 6th, we'll find out if you need someone here. I unfortunately have to go to Springfield, but Rich obviously can be here or Colin.
Fantastic.
Yeah, someone, if you need us here.
Thank you.
Okay.
City Minister Dawkins, you're comfortable?
Yes, sir.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, consider resolution executing the Eighth Amendment to an agreement for sale and purchase of electricity, capacity, and energy between Waste Management Illinois Renewable Energy LLC and the City of Geneva. Motion by Mayor, seconded by Pachke, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the current agreement between the City of Geneva and Waste Management Illinois Renewable Energy LLC for the output from the landfill gas electric generation facility located at Settlers Hill expires on December 31st, 2024. Negotiations with Waste Management to extend the agreement have resulted in a recommended contract extension for '25 and '26 at $34 a megawatt hour. For comparison, the expiring contract is at $42 a megawatt hour. The lower cost per megawatt hour is a result of a less volatile energy market as compared to the market that was around during the previous negotiations in 2022. And then there was a couple of questions that were posted earlier today regarding what impact that has on ratepayers, but it is a decrease in what we are currently paying. And I do have Director Babica still in the back of the room if you have any additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator or the director? And just to clarify, that number was a drop to 37?
Thirty-four.
Four, excuse me. Alderperson Kilburg?
Just, just some clarification. Maybe you can't answer my question this evening, but the ability of methane coming off the landfill continues to diminish and I think we're somewhere under what, five, four or five percent of our electrical needs are supplied by the landfill?
About 5% of our base load.
Right. And then, uh, they really don't have any other option either, do they, as it relates to, uh, the methane coming off the landfill? So again, we've seen a nice decrease. We've seen a, an eight cent decrease here, I think. And it's competitive with other supply?
That's correct. It's very competitive with our next year contract.
Very competitive. So again, uh, looks favorable, but do you know how, uh, as it relates to what they anticipate over the, the life of the landfill and the methane that we're taking from it? Another 10, 15 years?
It's in the questions that were answered earlier.
Okay.
They're indicated five to 10 years.
Five to 10 years? Okay, I didn't see that.
They're, they're not sharing, the Waste Management isn't sharing their projections, how long they think they have, but we anticipate five to 10 years.
Okay. That's all I had, Rich. Thank you.
That was easy. Anyone else? A more difficult question for Rich. If not, we have a motion. We have a second. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero Alderpersons absent. Item has passed. We are now to public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone joining us still who wishes to speak to or share with the council their thoughts, it's now your chance to do so. New business from the city, excuse me, the committee of the whole. Floor is open. A motion to adjourn is in order. Oh yeah, we have a closed session. That's right. Holy hand grenades. Closed session on pending litigation consisting with five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2-11. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Marx and Swanson. Roll call vote is required. Please take the role of city clerk.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarott?
Aye.
Malicki?
Aye.
Take just a moment. I will enter, Alderperson Casarott makes the motion to return to open session. Is there a second? They're seconded by Alderperson Marx. A roll call vote is in order. City Clerk Kelik?
Do what you do.
Casarott?
Aye.
Malicki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
We're back in open session, folks. Anything else for the benefit of ourselves and/or the community? A motion to adjourn was offered by Alderperson Marx. All in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night, everyone. Be safe.